Welcome, everyone. Before we call the meeting to order, we'll have a prayer by Councilman Rick Mahalovich, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Let us pray and be thankful for the staff and public safety personnel who have direct responsibility for the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens and guests of our city. As we consider the things we have to be thankful for for the City of Jefferson, let us further extend our prayers to those impacted by Hurricane Harvey. Let us pray for continued guidance in our deliberations and decisions, welcoming to the public open minds to new ideas, and conviction for improving the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of Jefferson City. In his name we pray.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will now call to order the Tuesday, September 5, 2017, City Council Meeting. Mrs. Powell, roll call, please.
Fitzwater.
Here.
Graham.
Here.
Henry.
Here.
Assi.
Here.
Kemna.
Here.
Mahalovich.
Here.
Prather.
Here.
Schreiber.
Here.
Ward.
Here.
Wiseman.
Item three, adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion?
Second.
And actually, if we could have a motion first to amend the agenda, moving item seven B, the update on the Texas hurricane efforts, to four B. So is there a motion to approve the agenda with that one item? I should have asked first. Do we still have the same motion in second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And before we begin, I also always like to recognize our scouts, and I notice we have some scouts here in the audience this evening. So, welcome. We're glad to have you. And if you're welcome to come to the podium and tell us what school you're with, if you would like to, tonight. Thank you for being here, and what troop you're with. So you can come up here to the microphone and speak in there, and let us know your names, and what school you're with, and what troop you're with tonight. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Logan Mears, and we're from Troop Eight.
Great.
Tyler Mears, Troop Eight, Trinity Lutheran School.
Bob Lays, Troop Eight, Trinity Lutheran.
Adam Johnson, Troop Eight, Trinity Lutheran.
Well, welcome. We're very glad to have you here tonight. Thank you. Did I miss any other scouts here this evening? Okay, thank you. And item four, under miscellaneous agenda items, we have item A, Presentation of Constitution Week Proclamation to Vivian Kason. Welcome, Vivian, if you'd like to come forward. And we have a special proclamation here for you that I will read, and I'll also look forward to an update from you. Whereas it is the privilege and duty of the American people to commemorate the 230th anniversary of the signing of the Constitution of the United States of America with appropriate ceremonies and activities. And whereas public law, 9/15, guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17 through 23 as Constitution Week. And whereas we urge all citizens to study the Constitution and reflect on the privilege of being an American with all the rights and responsibilities which that privilege involves. Therefore, I, Kerry Turgeon, Mayor of the City of Jefferson, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17 through 23 as Constitution Week, and I call this observance to the attention of all our citizens. So Vivian, if you'd like to give us some information at the podium here, and tell us a little bit about what you're doing for Constitution Week.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On behalf of the Jane Randolph Jefferson Chapter, Daughters of the American Revolution, I want to thank the City of Jefferson for its observance of Constitution Week through your proclamation. The National Society in 1955 initiated the observance of Constitution Week when the organization petitioned the U.S. Congress to commemorate the anniversary of the signing of the U.S. Constitution, September 17. The U.S. Constitution is celebrating its 240th anniversary this year. Thank you again for your patriotism and your continued observance of this great document. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you for what you do in our community, and we'll get a photograph here of -- I'll present the proclamation to you. And also, I know something that I've noted or noticed recently is the park at the end of Madison Street, which has -- that's, I guess, sponsored by DAR Group. And so, I know a lot of us go there and enjoy the overlook there for the riverfront. You -- your group has done a lot to -- for that kind of park-like area. So thank you for that, and for recognizing Constitution Week, and we will get a picture. Thank you, Mrs. Kason. And now, we have amended the agenda to move item seven B, which is an update on the Texas hurricane relief efforts. And under this particular item, we will have Mr. Councilman Carlos Graham give us an update. He is a Red Cross Board member. And we also have Lieutenant Christopher White from Salvation Army. So we'll be followed then with an update on what Salvation Army is doing. And I'm also pleased to announce that we have Hudson in our audience tonight, too. So after we make these presentations, we'll invite Hudson forward, too. So why don't we start with Councilman Graham? Why don't you tell us what is going on with the local Red Cross as a board member?
Certainly. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I do want to also recognize another board member, Councilman Rick Prather. And also in the audience, we have former council member Bill Lubert, who is a board member emeritus. So thank you for being here as well. Dave and I -- certainly not Dave, but Dave and I talk pretty much every day. I told him this morning, I said, "I think I talk to you more than your wife," and I think that's a problem. So him and I certainly had a laugh. So he did send me some information that he would like for me to read to the citizens of Jefferson, so they can hear what is going on firsthand as he is out there, as we're out there for a couple of days, and be out there for about another four or five days. He says, "Though the rain has stopped falling in Texas and Louisiana, river and bayou flooding continues. In some communities, people are cleaning up their flooded homes. The American Red Cross is there, providing food, shelter, and comfort to people affected by the devastating storm. We are doing everything possible to give people help where it is needed. While access to many areas is still challenging, we are expanding our reach into more communities every day. The rain has stopped, but rivers and bayous in the region remain at record flooding levels, and flood is expected to continue for days. Texas officials report damage from Harvey could reach as high as $180 billion. That is more than Hurricanes Katrina or Sandy. Officials estimate that as many as 135,000 homes may be impacted in Texas, with more than 22,000 homes receiving major damage. Evacuation orders are still in effect. Transportation, travel, and housing are expected to be impacted for an extended period of time. Hospitals and schools are closed, and thousands of people are without power. Communication systems are out, and multiple water treatment plants are shut down in Texas and Louisiana. Several oil refineries and chemical plants are also shut down. As of Sunday night, there was 33,000 people that sought refuge in 284 Red Cross and partner shelters across Texas overnight. The Red Cross is also assisting the Louisiana State Government with emergency shelters, which hosted nearly 1,300 people last night. More than 3,000 Red Cross disaster workers are on the ground, with an additional 450 on the way. Shelter supplies to support more than 85,000 people are on the ground. Along with our partners, we have served more than 690,000 meals and snacks since the storm began. We have trailers of kitchen supplies on the ground to support 16 kitchens, each able to produce 10,000 meals a day. We also have about 150,000 ready-to-eat meals ready currently on the ground. More than 215 emergency response vehicles, which we formerly know as IRVs, have been activated to help deliver meals and relief supplies. Mental health and health services professionals have provided some 21,000 contacts to provide support and care for evacuees. We've distributed more than 30,000 relief items, like diapers and comfort kits that contain deodorant, toothbrushes, toothpaste, and other hygiene items for people forced from their homes. Cleaning and relief supplies to support more than 35,000 homes are on the ground, with an additional 5,000 on the way. More than 23 million hurricane and flood alerts have been issued throughout Red Cross mobile app since August 23, well surpassing the 6 million issued for Superstorm Sandy. The app provides shelter locations and real-time information, so people can help protect themselves and their loved ones. Signed, Dave Griffin, Executive Director of the Red Cross, Central and Northern Missouri."
Thank you, Councilman Graham. We really appreciate Mr. Griffith and all that he does for the Red Cross, and for both of you serving on the board, and also having you here as well. It's great to have representation from the board, and we appreciate that. And is there anything locally that if people want to get involved, what can they do? Should they contact the Red Cross office?
Yes, you can contact the Red Cross office if someone is at the office, and they will get you the right directions to -- for donations, so.
And also through the -- via the website as well, they're able to donate through that avenue as well.
Yes. And mostly, our local stores will allow you to give additional monies for hurricane relief efforts as well, too.
Great. Well, we appreciate you in giving us that effort. And then also, Lieutenant Christopher White is here from Salvation Army. If he could also give us an update on what Salvation Army is doing.
Sure. And before I do this, I just want to say thank you for asking me to come and present. And I would love to have the mayor at my board meetings, because you guys are like whipping through this. So I appreciate that very much.
Thank you.
We've been getting media releases every day, so these numbers are two days out of date, but it's the most recent I could get. So I'll just pick a few main points out of the most recent press release from the Salvation Army down in Texas. They write this, "Salvation Army relief efforts have intensified over the holiday weekend as new areas of southeast Texas have become accessible. Food delivery is taking place in seven counties along the coastline, and incident command teams are in place to oversee operations and service delivery in 13 counties. We currently have seven shelters and three main warehouses." I thought this was really interesting. "In Houston, Best Buy has agreed to donate tablets that Salvation Army emotional and spiritual care teams will utilize to assist clients in signing up for FEMA assistance. Additionally, the incident command teams plan to release a Google survey to clients to better understand and assess their specific needs. Thirty-three teams are providing meals, snacks, and drinks from mobile feeding units, in addition to emergency supplies throughout Houston and the surrounding counties. There are 74 mobile feeding units and teams from throughout Texas and beyond are providing tireless and committed service to those in need. And as of September 3, the Salvation Army has served 200,000 meals, just under 133,000 snacks, 172,000 drinks statewide in response to Hurricane Harvey, and emotional, spiritual care officers have spoken with just under 8,000 individuals. And on Friday, last Friday, the Salvation Army of Jefferson City partnered with KRCG and their parent company Sinclair Broadcast Group. And we were at Hy-Vee from 12 to 6 p.m. I took three hours, and Rod Smith took three hours. And so we went out with a kettle. We didn't have any bells, thankfully, not yet. But in just those six hours, we raised just under $6,000. You think that's $1,000 an hour that have been coming in. And just today, we had some people come in bringing checks that added up to another $1,500. And it's acts like they're seeing the average person who sees those images on the TV. They hear the numbers, and they think, "How can I help? What can I do?" And they go to an organization like the Red Cross or the Salvation Army, and they give what they can. And it really reminds me, at times like this, and acts like this, just how generous and giving the Jefferson City community is. We see it at Christmas time, and when events like this happen, we see it. The best qualities in a person and in a community come to the fore. And we just want to say thank you to the people who have donated. It's going through the Salvation Army directly to Houston, to the people that need it most. And I appreciate the few moments you've given me to come and share that as well.
Thank you, Lieutenant White. And did you give us the contact information if people want to get involved?
I didn't. You can follow, if you go to disaster.salvationarmy.org, that has all the information that you need, and any donations that come into our local office. And we're at our business office, open five days a week, and our shelters open 24/7. Then people can come and give, and we assure them that that money goes directly to the Salvation Army there in Houston, Texas.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that, and appreciate hearing our updates. I know there's a lot of great organizations that are working on this, and we wanted to highlight some of our local ones here, since we have the connections and the involvement. I've received emails, phone calls to the mayor's office of people saying, "What is the city doing? What can we do to help?" So I wanted to give this opportunity to say some of the efforts that are going on, and appreciate your service as well.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Also, I wanted to announce also that we have also started to send volunteers to Florida for Hurricane Irma. So that is on the horizon as well. So we are certainly watching that. But we have started sending people down there as well, too, so.
Thank you. We appreciate your efforts. And now I'm excited to ask to come forward. We have Hudson with us today. Welcome, Hudson. And I'm not sure, Lieutenant White, would you maybe help the -- yeah, you can take that completely out.
If I break this, it's your fault.
And I wonder, do you want to stand? Where would be the best place where we can still, like, maybe right off to the side there, where we can see you? Perfect. And you can talk right into there. You can come forward a little bit. Perfect. Hi, Hudson. I'm excited to meet you and welcome you to the City Council Meeting. And first, I want to call to everybody's attention. We have a picture of Hudson on our screen with his lemonade stand that he did over the weekend. And this picture was actually posted on Facebook, and I was tagged in it on Jefferson City Good, Bad, and the Ugly page. And whenever you get a tag on that page, you wonder, "What could it possibly be?" And it was something that was really, really for the good, for the really good of Jefferson City. And I was so excited when I saw all the people who came to your lemonade stand. So I wanted to invite you. So welcome, Hudson. And if you want to tell us a little about yourself, how old are you, Hudson?
Six.
You're six years old? How did you come up with this great idea to have this lemonade stand?
Oh, when I came home from school, my mommy asked if you wanted to do a lemonade stand, and I said yes.
Well, that's a great idea. So you wanted to help people that had been affected by the hurricane?
Yes.
That's great. Well, I think that was a really great idea. What school do you go to, Hudson?
Pony Trail.
Great. Yes, do you have another one coming up this weekend?
Yes.
Great. Do you want to tell us a little about that?
Uh, it's Saturday, and I don't know how long it is. My mommy told me, but I forgot.
Well, that's fine. So this Saturday, you will be back. I believe that, what is that, September 9? Is that right? Saturday, September 9, probably in the afternoon. And I know the information, will it be posted on Facebook? I know your mom is here. Yes, we'll get that posted. And you're welcome to come forward, too. I know we're going to get some pictures. So we have your family. Is this your -- who's with you today, Hudson?
My mommy and my daddy.
Your mom and dad? Well, you're both welcome to come forward if you'd like. Yeah, come on up. Well, and I will say to your parents, too, we're very proud of your entire family and what you've done. And Hudson, you're a really wonderful example to other kids in the community, and to all of us grown-ups on ways that we can help. And you've made it easy for people to give by buying your lemonade.
Mm-hmm. And I also want to donate it to J.J. Watts.
The J.J. Watts Fund is who you're donating it to, and that helps hurricane efforts?
Mm-hmm.
Wonderful. Well, we appreciate having you all here. And was there anything you wanted to add?
Just want to tell them what you raised?
Uh...
Yeah, how much did you raise?
Almost $1,000.
Wow. Almost $1,000, he said. That's fantastic. And it's not over yet, because you'll raise more. So you did this for two days, is that right, over the weekend?
Yes.
Somebody from, it's actually a native of Jefferson City, actually lives in Houston, and she saw it. And she offered to match every dollar that he made for the J.J. Watts Foundation, and then also for the food bank. So that's where we got to almost $1,000. So he actually made about $330. So she matched every dollar that he made.
Well, you're not finished yet, though, are you?
And she's in, yeah.
Well, looks like we have some more. And here's some more for you, too. Can you, when you get the mic, or can you give us the address of where the lemonade stand? So we're -- it's busy right now.
Yeah, we're off 4816 Charm Ridge Drive.
Okay, 4816 Charm Ridge, and it'll be this Saturday, the 9, around the afternoon, or do you know what time? 1 to 3. Okay. Looks like you have some more. So wow, here's some more over here, Hudson.
I've got a budget I can put you on, too.
We'll definitely put you to work. There's some more over here, too. Well, that is just fantastic. And if anyone in the audience wants to give to Hudson, to the J.J. Watts Fund, and I think it's really generous that you're doing this, Hudson, and using your time to help other people, and also that you had matching funds from somebody from Jefferson City that lives in Houston now. I think that's very generous, too. So before you leave, I'm going to come around here, and I'm going to present you with the City Coin. And these things are really valuable. Not very many people get a City Coin. But I'll tell you what is way more valuable than this coin will ever be, is what you are doing to help so many people in need. And you're really doing that out of the goodness of your heart, and working with your family and your parents. So you keep that up, and I hope that you always have that giving heart, and that you're a good example to others. So even though this coin might be worth a lot, what you're doing is worth way more than this. So I'm going to come around, and we're going to get a picture with Hudson. So would all the council come up here, so we can get our picture?
Can we get one on the mom's phone, or the?
Wonderful. And I have a little...
Good job.
Good job. Thank you very much.
Oh, that's so great. Thank you very much, Hudson. Thank you very much.
And could we get our two Red Cross Board members, and also, would you come up to us? Do a Red Cross picture. Let's do a Red Cross picture, too.
See Stephanie just leaving?
Yeah, she's getting...
And Rick here on the board, too. So why don't you come in? We're going to do a Red Cross picture.
I thought she was going to get arrested.
Don't you all have a chase me out?
We're going to get a Salvation Army picture, too.
Okay, great.
Thank you. Now you're excused.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, everyone. We will post and share those pictures with everyone, and appreciate the willingness of council to move that up on the agenda. I know Hudson has, I'm sure, some homework tonight, so we wanted to make sure he could get home. So appreciate that very much. Now, we're on to item five, our public hearings. And item A, we have the endorsing of the historic South Side Old Munichburg District Neighborhood Plan. And I'll give a little bit of background on this particular item before we open the public hearing portion. City Code calls for a public hearing on comprehensive plan amendments, so we're going to have the public hearing. But the associated resolution with that, at this time, we likely will not vote to accept that. The vote will likely be to postpone because our legal department is looking into just the way that resolutions on comprehensive plan amendments are done. So it's not anything specifically geared towards the specific bill. It is mainly just the general law, basically state law, that states that whether or not City Council's vote on comprehensive plan amendments. Is that correct? Did I state that correctly, Ryan?
That's fair.
Anything to add?
No, just we just want to take a look into the procedural aspects.
Right. We want to make sure we follow the correct procedure in this particular item. So we will move forward now with the public hearing. So first, we'll do a staff update. Mr. Barron, if you'll give us the update, and then we'll open the public hearing and have public comments.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So this is a public hearing regarding the South Side Old Munichburg District and Neighborhood Plan. First, to give you a general idea of the location or the area that this plan encompasses, up on the screen is a location map showing the area addressed by the plan. Roughly speaking, on the northern boundaries, just south of the core downtown area, so just south of McCarty Street for the northern boundary, and the southern boundary around Stadium Stadium Boulevard or a little bit further south than that. And then, to the east, goes as far as Lincoln University and Clark Avenue. And to the west, as far as the old St. Mary's Hospital property. And also, some of the outlying areas of the district, just on the other side of Highway 54, including some of the Lutheran campus and Colias area. But the plan really focuses on the old Munichburg District and the South Side neighborhood, shown in the stronger color in the center of the screen. There was an extensive public engagement process that was put forth with this plan. It was originally sponsored or commissioned by Capital Region Medical Center. And they hired a consultant, a planning, professional planning consulting firm, H3 Studios. And went through an engagement process involving, is up on the screen, over 120 different people that took part in this planning process for this area. With a number of public meetings and stakeholder sessions, as shown on the right-hand side of the screen up there. They also formed a committee that addressed some of the finer details of the plan. Up on the screen is a listing of the various community members, which is quite a cross-section of the community, including both public and private organizations, representatives from across Jefferson City. The plan lays out 10 development principles and four long-term focus areas that are really the core recommendations of the plan. And I'll touch on each one of these very briefly in the next set of slides. First, neighborhood development principle, number one, to develop the US-50 corridor as an urban boulevard, essentially to put in some landscaping and a greenway along Highway 50 and try to beautify it up, to serve as a link, both an entrance to the South Side area and a link with the South Side area and the downtown area. Number two, build on the heart of the community. Some recommendations dealing with infill commercial development along Dunkland Street and really strengthening Dunkland Street as a commercial core for this particular neighborhood. Number three, to develop a distinctive community identity on Dunkland Street. And this recommendation is really focused on strengthening Dunkland Street as a festival district and giving it its, strengthening its historic identity. Number four, improve streetscape image and characters. There are several corridors, street corridors, that go through the neighborhood and along its boundaries with recommendations on how those could be improved in the future. Number five, expand housing choices. Now, this is a recommendation that would essentially focus on improving the housing stock of this neighborhood and the community as a whole through a variety of different programs, including a rental conservation program, which would consist of regular inspections of our rental housing on a regular basis to ensure that they meet minimum property maintenance code requirements. Number six, a park component, to create and expand an interconnected park and greenway system. This really focuses on some of the more flood-prone areas and identifying the long-term future of that area as being either open space or parkland. Number seven, developing a community development corporation. This would be a nonprofit organization tasked with revitalizing the neighborhood. And there's a variety of different methods that a nonprofit agency could use to help encourage not only implementation of the plan, but revitalization in general. Number eight, develop a great streets program. This is basically a focus on ensuring that streets within the area are capable of being used by a wide range of different transportation modes, walking, biking, vehicle, and mass transit. And then, also ensuring that they are aesthetically pleasing types of corridors. Number nine, improve actual and perceived safety. This is really a combination of enforcement, education, and improvements to the safety perception within the area. And number 10, developing a health district, essentially encouraging recreation and healthy living. And so, in addition to those 10 neighborhood development principles, the plan lays out four long-term focus areas, which are shown up on the screen. The areas of the neighborhood are highlighted there. I'll touch on each one of them, lettered A through D. A is really a reiteration of the mixed, establishing a mixed use in core Dunkland Street area, likely with an overlay zoning district or some other method of ensuring some design standards for future development and any redevelopment within the area. Item B is the establishment of a park, particularly along Ware's Creek to the western side of the neighborhood near Missouri Boulevard and some of the flood-prone area within that, adjacent to that creek. Essentially, there's an extension of Washington Park, which is just across the highway underneath. It has a connection underneath the highway via the greenway. Item C are some land use recommendations adjacent to Lincoln University. The plan essentially calls out for some commercial land use, essentially at Dunkland and Chestnut, where the university and its students could benefit from some nearby commercial options to the campus there. And then, also some multifamily and residential-type components surrounding that, where both residents and students could live. And then, item D is improvements to the stadium and Highway 54 interchange to the southern part of the area. And a very long-term focus on that, which is essentially to improve that intersection over the very long term. The plan does include a land use plan, which is shown up on the screen. A lot of the land use recommendations are built upon those development principles and long-term focus areas that are identified within the plan. And it does include an implementation aspect. The implementation of the plan stretches out to 20 years and more. It's a very long-term type of plan. But does include some initial steps, which I'll touch on. Now, the first, the establishment of the CDC, the Community Development Corporation, would be an important first step to really get the revitalization of that neighborhood into hands of a professional CDC administrator. Number two, to implement some of the housing programs, there's, you know, one of the recommendations was to use a variety of different programs to encourage upgrade of housing and revitalization. Third, zoning revisions and overlay districts, likely focused on the core of the downtown or the Dunkland Street core, establishing the zoning and overlay for that area to encourage any new development be built in a matter that's similar to what's there today. In other words, a streetfront, commercial, walkable type of downtown environment for Dunkland Street. And then, also some of the zoning revisions for Lincoln University would likely be one of the initial steps. And there's a lot of the neighborhood that's identified as being really planned out for a single-family residential use, but is zoned multifamily. And so, a large rezoning of some of the single-family areas to their current use. And then, fourth, to some of the Highway 50 improvements and beautification along Highway 50, really called out as being an initial step. This plan is only a guide. It's a planning document that's meant to serve as a basis for future implementations and future recommendations. So, basically, a starting point for future decisions to be made. It's not a fiscally constrained plan. There are no dollar amounts for the various improvements that are contained within it that are identified. They did not create any type of capital improvement plan with this document. And the plan does include action by a number of different organizations and departments, both public and private, both different departments within the city and then different agencies outside of the city. With that, I'd be happy to answer any initial questions there may be.
Thank you, Mr. Barron. And this does not change any current zoning, correct?
That is correct. It is not a rezoning in any manner. It's merely laying out a plan. It does have a land use recommended or plan within it, and so, it could serve as the basis for future rezoning proposals.
Thank you. Councilman Prather?
Should an individual wishing to purchase property in the future, or even a business wanting to expand their locations, maybe to adjacent property? If they had questions, who would they talk to regarding those activities?
They could certainly talk to me, talk to the director of our department. I think we're both fairly well-versed on the different details contained within this plan. And certainly, if there's any questions that we cannot answer, we can point them in the direction of people who could.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions before we have the public hearing? Okay. At this time, I will open the public hearing. Is there anyone here? Let me see if we have anyone that's signed up. Why don't we start with Mrs. Janet Weckenberg here to speak on the plan? Welcome Janet.
Thank you. Thank you, Major. Mayor Tarrigan. My name is Janet Weckenberg, and I represent Capital Region Medical Center. I serve as Vice President of Operations, and I've been there for a lot of years. So, a couple of comments. Number one, I think the overview that you just presented, Mr. Barron, was great. This plan came from participation of a number of folks. And while the print was fairly small there, quite frankly, many of you sat on those committee meetings. Many of you in the audience also sat on those hearings and those discussion groups. And that's why the plan is as strong as it is, is that I think it really took into account the assets that this area provides, the struggles that this community and that part of the community has, the walkability, the livability of the area, which we think is important to those who serve as neighbors to Capital Region Medical Center. So, that was important. A second message is that we're excited to see the plan get to this stage. Having been involved in the very beginning of this kernel of an idea to get it to this stage, for everyone to look at the opportunities and where we might go, and to see a plan be able to serve as a guide, and I think that's a great word to use, is exciting. Anytime that you can take the assets of an area and make them real and take advantage of that, that's in the best interest of the city and the folks that live there. So, we appreciate that. As I said, this is full circle. This is a participative effort. It was in the beginning, and it is now when you call for other comments. So, we appreciate that the city and the process allows for that. We think it's important. We've been there. We've planned to be there for a long time. We plan to be good stewards and good neighbors to those that we border. And we want to see it a safe and healthy place for people to come and receive healthcare. So, that's really important to us. Again, thank you to all of you who were a part of those meetings, sat next to Lars several times. That was nice. H3 was a great company, I think, to participate with us and really try to get into the core of what this area represents to our city as far as history. And I think that's important. I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council has. Otherwise, we want to say thank you again for the consideration. Thank you for your participation, and we're really excited about this.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mrs. Weckenberg? Great. Thank you, and appreciate Capital Region Hospital's commitment to making the community better, that they care not just what happens right in the vicinity of their hospital, but it's a great example of a business that cares about the entire community and how they can do their part to make it better. So, thank you for the investment on behalf of what the hospital has done.
Thank you.
We also have signed up Mrs. Angela Hirsch. Welcome.
Good evening, members of the council. My name is Angela Hirsch. I'm here this evening representing Central Missouri Community Action. I am the Chief Program Officer for CMCA. Many of you are familiar with CMCA as a crisis service provider for families and communities dealing with the issues of poverty. Today, I am here to represent the other arm of our agency, which is community development. We are in strong support of this plan. We are very excited to see this redevelopment effort being discussed here in the city of Jefferson. And we are here to offer our support, our resources, and our talents in helping this plan come to fruition. What many of you may not realize is that Central Missouri Community Action is a designated CDC. And we are here to offer that service to this community as your local community action agency. We are also one of three rural LISC agencies in the state. LISC is the Local Initiative Support Corporation, a federal office. Because our community is considered a rural community, that provides opportunities for this area that may not exist for additional urban communities. Because we are one of three designated rural LISC agencies, we have access to additional resources, funding opportunities, et cetera, that we would be happy to assist in making those opportunities possible for a project like this. So, again, I just wanted to reiterate our support for this project, our offer to be involved in any way we possibly can to ensure its success as it moves forward. Thank you.
Thank you for your active involvement, Mrs. Hirsch. Are there any questions this evening for Mrs. Hirsch? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. We also have Cindy Juckett. Are you signed up for this hearing or for the next one? For the next one, thank you. And it's not a requirement to sign up. Is there anyone else here that would like to speak on the public hearing portion tonight? Okay, at this time, I will close the public hearing portion, and we will have some council discussion about the hearing. Are there any council questions or comments? Councilman Graham?
Yes, Madam Mayor. After having a long conversation with our city attorney, I motioned to postpone indefinitely until such time the Law Department has looked into city procedures relating to the comprehensive plan amendments and related to the state law.
We have a motion to postpone. Is there a second? Any further discussion on the motion? Roll call, yes.
Would this be the time?
Sure. Legal staff has some concerns about current procedures, and we really want to take a look into how city code approaches comprehensive plan amendments and changes to the comprehensive plan, and how they interact with state law. Make sure that we're getting the procedures right to not compromise anything that the city council will do. We just want to make sure we do it right on the front end as opposed to having to fix something on the back end.
Councilman Mahalovich?
Thank you. I'm in support of this plan, and I thank Capital Region for their efforts. I support many of the elements of the plan, especially related to improving the housing stock, the public safety, the economic development aspects of this. The Community Development Corporation is a new concept to us, and I'm anxious to hear and learn more about how that will take the development of an infill development and improve that effort and that community. I also support efforts of this council to make monies and priorities towards those projects in the future, so that we can see as we move down, further down the road, how we can really make this plan come to fruition. So, I'd support efforts to identify priorities in this area, to fund those priorities, and to try to move forward on the plan as we can.
Thank you. And kind of building on what Counselor Mullman mentioned, the action that's being taken to legally review is a procedural one. It doesn't affect this plan in any way, because this plan has already been approved by planning and zoning. So, council would not be making amendments or changes to the plan, because it's already been approved, which is the correct manner anyway. So, there would not, this is not a plan up for review where the council would look at certain parts. The plan has been adopted as a whole by planning and zoning, correct?
That's correct. State law provides that. The Planning and Zoning Commission is the appropriate body to adopt these types of plans.
Sure. And that action has already been taken, and that was approved. Was that a unanimous decision at planning and zoning? I don't remember. I believe it was.
I believe it was, yes.
Okay. Okay. Just for, mainly for clarification, so. And I also, I know we have a motion and second on the table to postpone this indefinitely. And I want to take a moment to recognize those that are in the audience. I recognize a lot of people who've worked on the plan or those that have businesses in the area or are residents in that area. So, I appreciate seeing the interest and having them here in the audience to see firsthand the discussion tonight. And also, we have a former councilwoman Vogel here as well. It's always good to see you here in the crowd as well. Appreciate your active involvement in our community. And Councilman Bill Lubert, former councilman too. So, we actually have a few of us in here that have served. So, any other council questions, comments, deliberation before we vote on the motion on the table? Okay, let's do a roll call on this. Fitzwater?
Aye.
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hussy?
Aye.
Kemna?
Aye.
Mahalavich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Thank you. So, we will wait for an update from Mr. Mullman on the future direction of that resolution. And thank you again to staff for, I know it's a plan that's been coming forward from the community for several, several months. And appreciate their interest in this area of our community that's very rich with history and heritage and appreciate the input and ideas in the plan to enhance this neighborhood. Now, we will take up our second public hearing, item B, the final PUD plan for 1732 and 1736 Veeth Drive. At this time, Mr. Sanders, would you, I'm sorry, Mr. Barron will give us the staff, or do you need to read it first? Okay. We'll have Mrs. Powell go ahead and read the bill first.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri approving a final PUD plan for property addressed at 1732 and 1736 Veeth Drive.
And Mr. Barron will give us an update.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This bill would approve a final PUD plan for a daycare and a skilled nursing facility located on Veeth Drive at 1732 and 1736. First to orient you to the location of the property, up on the screen is a location map with the property highlighted. It's located on the west side of Veeth Drive, about 2,000 feet north of Route C, about 250 feet north of Colonial Hills Road. And so, highlighted up there on the screen. The property is owned a PUD, Planned Unit Development. It was rezoned to a PUD district along with approval of the preliminary PUD plan for this proposed development on June 19th by the city council. So, the preliminary PUD plan for this matter was approved on June 19th. Some of the other land uses surrounding this property are noteworthy. First, the JC Manor, which is a nursing home, is located just north of the property and is actually, kind of shares some of the driveway and circulation areas that are proposed within the plan that I'll show on the following screens. Also, Southridge Baptist Church is located just to the bottom side of the screen on the east side of Veeth Drive. And then, just north off of the screen is Cedar Hill School, Elementary School. So, up on the screen is the approved preliminary PUD plan, again, which was approved on June 19th. It shows the layout of the development. And then, now on the screen is the proposed final PUD plan. And so, there's been a little bit of additions to the plan, based largely on public comments that we received during the preliminary PUD process. First, landscaping. In addition to the parking lot trees that are located within the site, there's landscaping that's shown on, if the mouse pointer would work for me, on the southern side of the property between the proposed daycare and the house on the, to the south of this property. And then, there's a row of evergreen trees shown there. And then, there's some existing trees that are adjacent to Veeth Drive that are proposed to be kept in place. So, the applicant has said that they would preserve those trees. And then, also fill in some of the trees, some of the yard area with trees in order to further screen this development from Veeth Drive. There was a toddler playground that was initially located very close to the southern property line that was relocated to the west of a daycare building in order to keep that playground, again, a little bit further away from the adjacent residential house. And then, to the western side of the property, kind of back behind the development and the buildings and the parking lot, there's a wooded area that's identified as being left in place, except for where it's necessary to clear out areas for installation of sewer line or stormwater detention basin that's shown on the plan. So, other than construction, the rest of the trees would be kept in place. And so, up on the screen, again, the mouse pointer will not cooperate, but the building that's closest to Veeth Drive, no, still won't. Building closest to Veeth Drive is the skilled nursing facility. And the one down to the lower side of the property is the proposed daycare. There's a small maintenance building that's shown, kind of adjacent to the parking lot as well. And they did give a rendering of what the daycare building would look like. And so, they've incorporated a bit of architectural design into their building, including some stone wing scot, some hardy board siding, exposed heavy timber framing, and architectural shingles. So, up on the screen is a rendering of what the daycare building would look like. Also, it has a floor plan for the interior, how the interior would lay. With that, I believe the consultant is here and might be able to shed some additional information on details of the project. With that, I'd be happy to answer any initial questions that council may have.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Barron? Okay. So, would the consultant want to come forward now and say anything at this time? Or would that be Paul, Mr. Sampson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd just maybe highlight on a, touch on a few things that Eric initially mentioned and go into just a little bit more detail on what's transpired since the preliminary PUD plan was approved in June. Before the meeting, I did hand out to the council people, and it's up on the screen, a colored rendering of the new site plan. Just a few of the highlights, as Eric said, the preschool would be located on the south of the property. It would be a 6,500-square-foot facility licensed for up to 99 children. The actual number, the 99 children is kind of a state regulatory breaking point. Anything smaller than that, I think the cutoff is somewhere around 20. So, there's a big gap in the licensing. So, in order to get a facility of sufficient size, they had to go to the 99 children licensing. They're planning on offering a intergenerational program between the children at the daycare and the residents of the nursing home to the north. The two, the nursing home as well as the new skilled nursing and the preschool would all be owned by the Juckett family and their associated entities. The preschool would also after, offer before-school and after-school care. And children from the daycare would be escorted to and from school to Cedar Hill by a staff member. The hospice facility is located on the east side of the property. There'll be 12 beds in the facility and they would specialize in hospice care for increased privacy of the residents. The 12 beds in that facility would be transferred out of the bed count of the existing facility. So, there's no need for any additional certificates of need or things of that nature. And then, the maintenance building would be located directly across the parking lot and would serve all three facilities. They're also going to be adding off-street parking that would service the two exist, or the two new facilities, as well as additional parking for the Jefferson City Manor. And this will help to reduce the use of on-street parking on Veeth Drive, which is problematic at times now. The preliminary PUD plan that was approved in June, there were some concerns that were raised by council people and neighbors as well. So, after that was approved, we wanted to understand everybody's concerns and get everything on the table and help come up with solutions to those issues. So, the Juckets invited, sent personal invitations to anybody who had spoken at either the Planning and Zoning or the city council public hearings, sent personal invitations to anybody who spoke, as well as the fourth ward council people and the mayor as well, held a meeting in their facility to be able to list any issues that anybody had and help come up with solutions. They also made, between us and the Juckets, made personal contact with people who didn't come to the meeting but still had previously voiced concerns. So, we really made an effort to talk to the neighbors and make sure everything was being addressed. As Eric noted, there was a few things on the plan that changed since the preliminary PUD plan that came out of these meetings. Again, the toddler area was moved from the south side of the daycare to the west side, which increased the buffering width to the south property line to 30 feet. The buffer yard on the, between Veeth Drive and the hospice facility was also increased to 40 feet. We added screening trees along Veeth Drive to help screen the hospice facility from Veeth Drive, as well as a row of evergreen trees along the south property line to help screen the daycare from the adjacent residential property to the south. And then, again, we're showing a small group of trees along Veeth Drive that we will keep intact as much as possible during the construction. And then, the large group of trees to the west of the property between the Colonial Hills neighborhood and the development would largely remain intact. In addition to those changes, we also added some additional detail and clarification of some of the other items that had been brought to light. One of the items that we looked at was the existing and proposed traffic volumes on Veeth Drive. We asked the city staff and they obliged us in performing traffic counts on Veeth Drive. I think that was done two weeks ago. And the average daily traffic on Veeth Drive for the two days that they counted was 2,650 vehicles per day. Prior to the construction of the Highway 179 extension, Veeth Drive was really a major north-south corridor through the city. And at that time, the traffic volumes on Veeth Drive were over 5,500 vehicles a day. So, the traffic on Veeth, that Veeth Drive sees today is much reduced from what it was 10 years ago. If you run the calculations for the development, approximately 170 vehicles per day are what is anticipated to be the traffic growth from the development, which is about a 6% increase from the traffic that's there today. But again, it's still significantly less than what was seen previously prior to 179. And we also think that because of the location of the Cedar Hills neighborhood, as well as Cedar Hills School, that many of the vehicles and people that would be patrons of the daycare are already using Veeth Drive in their daily activities. So, we really don't believe that the additional traffic on Veeth Drive will be as much as what the calculations show. One of the other items that was brought up was the thought that the addition of a driveway onto Veeth Drive would endanger children walking to Cedar Hills School. We did a little bit of research and the start time for Cedar Hills School is nine o'clock in the morning, which does not correspond with the peak drop-off times for children at the daycare. The peak drop-off times would be expected to be around seven to eight in the morning. Again, whereas the start times at Cedar Hills doesn't start until nine. So, the kids walking really miss the peak drop-off times for the school. In the afternoon, this is the same situation. School gets out at four o'clock. Peak drop, pickup times at the preschool would be somewhere between 5:30, 4:30 to 5:30. We also did a calculation showing that during the peak drop-off and pickup times at the preschool, the vehicle utilization of the two driveways would be less than one vehicle per minute. Around 60 cars in an hour is what we were projecting. Taking those facts and the fact that children are already crossing Cedar Hill and the Colonial Hills and Yorke Town both, we really think that there's not much of a safety problem that would be created by the additional driveway. We also had some concerns voiced about site distance of the new driveway. We did lay out the driveway in the field, met city staff onsite, watched traffic go by, met with David Bangy, the city engineer, as well as Shane Wade, the plan reviewer. And based on our observations, the site distance looking south on Veeth Drive was more than adequate for the design speed on Veeth Drive. Looking back to the north, as it sits today, there's a little bit of vegetation that blocks the view. But with a little bit of vegetation clearing right along Veeth Drive, we'll be able to get more than the adequate site distance. And finally, the other thing that came out is everybody's favorite subject of stormwater. The second handout that I added in the packets shows the, and it seems like a lot of the stormwater discussions have focused around the intersection of Stadium Boulevard and Satinwood Drive. So, the map that's up on the screen now shows the drainage area of everything that runs into that Stadium-Satinwood intersection. It's approximately 680 acres that drains into that area. Highlighted in green in the middle is the proposed site, which is 3.25 acres. So, the proposed development is less than one-half of 1% of the entire drainage area. Looking at the fact that only about 50% of the proposed site will be paved, the stormwater impacts downstream at that Stadium Boulevard-Satinwood Drive intersection, the impacts from the development are really immeasurable. Be that as it may, we are still providing stormwater detention on the site. We're going to be routing all the stormwater to the west side of the site. We'll be installing a stormwater detention basin. And with that basin, we'll also be picking up some of the existing runoff from the Jefferson City Manor site. So, in the end, the peak runoff rates leaving the property after the development will actually be less than the peak runoff rates that are currently seen on the property. So, we think that all the discussions that we had with city staff, council people, and the neighbors have really been beneficial to helping to improve the project while at the same time protecting the needs of the neighborhood. And we would ask that the council approve the final PUD plan.
Thank you. Any questions at this time for Paul, Mr. Sampson?
Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Councilman Graham?
Mr. Sampson, in regards to the stormwater basin, you said it's going to go to the west of the property?
Yes.
Which is going to send it where?
That would, the big blue spot, that is the stormwater detention basin.
Okay.
So, all the roof water from the skilled nursing facility, the roof water from the preschool, and the vast majority of the water from the parking lots all get, will get diverted to the west side of the property. So, that will increase the runoff. But that detention basin is designed such that it will hold the water and allow it to release at a rate that's less than what is being released today. So, the downstream effects are, is it will be a reduction in the peak flow of stormwater off the site.
So, it's going back towards Colonial Hills subdivision?
Correct.
You don't think it's going to be an impact or a problem going back towards Colonial Hills?
It'll be, it'll be a help.
It'll be a help?
The, again, the peak runoff rate after the project will be less than the peak runoff rate today. Less peak stormwater. What, the way stormwater detention basins are designed is that they hold the water in the basin and allow it to release at a rate slower than what would normally be seen.
I think sometimes the way they're designed and the way they perform is two different things. But that's just me.
That's why we go to school and that's why the city staff reviews plans. And it gets a lot of scrutiny, I can tell you that.
And we're still having issues and concerns. But thank you.
Any further questions for Mr. Sampson?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. At this time, we'll open the public hearing portion. Is there anyone here that would like to speak? Actually, first we'll have Mrs. Cindy Juckett. Welcome. Alls I can say is thank you guys for keep revisiting this for me. Our staff is excited, our residents are excited. Where I'm excited so that I hope it goes through. We're doing the best to change as people tell us what they don't like or do like, you know, adding the trees, not taking down the trees, different things like that. So except the stormwater issue, I can't fix anything else that people didn't like about it, I guess. So I've done what I think I can and offered to put in different things, you know, the trees, everything like that to make everybody as comfortable as I can. So just thank you guys and I hope it's a project you guys want us to do, so.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mrs. Juckett? Councilman, Councilman Mahalovich, please.
I just want to thank you and for addressing what you can about the concerns of the community. Oftentimes, we have developers that just lay out the plan and really forget to involve the community for which they're impacting the most. So I certainly appreciate your efforts in that regard.
Thank you. I was a little slow. This is my first radio here, so I had no clue. So it took me a little time to know what I needed to do, but with Paul and some of my other people, we got, I think we're, hopefully we should be. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Thank you. Is there anyone else here that would like to speak on this item? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing portion. And at this time, we'll take up Bill 201759. Is there any council deliberation or discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Graham?
No.
Henry?
No.
Hussy?
Aye.
Kemna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Bill passes. Okay. Item six, appointments by the mayor, there are none. Item seven, presentation from staff consultants and invited guests. We have, item A, Division Chief Turner has an update on Red Cross Preparedness Month. Very appropriate timing.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have a short video to present.
To follow up with Council Graham earlier, with the events that we've had in here, had across the nation the last couple of weeks, it says best that are we prepared? And you are, you are the help until help arrives. September is the Red Cross Preparedness Month. Our community and citizens need to understand that the risks that we may face here in our own community. Understand which disasters could affect our community, know what to do, and stay safe. Take the actions to increase preparedness and improve the ability to recover from these disasters. Being prepared requires us to mobilize, take an active role within protecting our community, ourselves, and our loved ones. We encourage anyone that needs further information, they can go to the redcross.org and get more information on their website. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. That's very good timing with everything happening, of course, in the country. But like it said, you know, disasters aren't planned and it's good for us to be prepared. And so I hope that we all take that to heart. Looking at the video, it almost is just kind of chilling to see that and think of the impact that it can have if we're not prepared. So thank you for bringing that to our attention this evening. Let's see, we've already had item B. So item eight, announcements by mayor, council, and staff. And of course, you can check out our committee meeting agendas at jeffersoncitymo.gov for a complete calendar and times. Are there any committee meetings that would like to announce upcoming meetings and dates and times? Okay, and it's my understanding there will not be administration this Wednesday, correct, Gail? Okay. I will start with my announcements. And one would be maybe a question I might call on Lieutenant Pat McCutcheon from the police department. I was recently asked what local efforts might be done to assist with animals in the, I know there's been animals displaced with the recent hurricanes. Are there things that people can do or contribute to locally that you're aware of?
I'm not certain on the animal side of it, other than we are waiting. What we're doing is we're waiting for official requests for any kind of help from Texas. If we, what they're trying to do is prevent everybody from just going down there and contributing to the chaos of trying to help out. So we have to wait for an official request and we'll see if we're able to help and prepared to help at that time.
Thank you. We appreciate that. And I hate to put you on the spot there. I know you're filling in this evening for Chief Schrader, which we appreciate. So I had recently just posed that question. It just came up to me as well. So I'll make sure that as you get in contact or as they contact you, I suppose, we can make sure and send that out to council too, so they're aware of any direction that may come in the future, since some of us might have been asked that question.
Yeah, I think the best route would be to the Humane Society. And they're, on the state level is where they're trying to work with that to see.
So the Humane Society in Texas at the state level, is that what you're talking about?
Well, and that's where we're waiting, where we would wait to hear something come from them as an official request.
Okay. But in the meantime, people can, if they were wanting to help personally, they could give through that arm of, I guess, the Humane Society?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. That's what, that's what I was asked, so appreciate that. And I will give a few other announcements. One is an exciting announcement. Historic City of Jefferson recently gave $20,000 donated to the city's Old Town Down Payment Assistant Program, which is a fantastic way to revitalize neighborhoods. So that's been a very successful city program over the years. And it's great to see a group like Historic City of Jefferson Foundation to get involved. And for them to give $20,000 to this program shows that they see the value in it. It's very successful and appreciate their effort in contributing to this great organization. Also wanted to announce that the ribbon cutting was held for the Stadium and Jefferson Roundabout last week. And glad to have that open. And we had several council members in attendance. And it's a very nice, nice new roundabout that was completed ahead of schedule, Mr. Marash said. Is there anything you want to add on the roundabout?
Oh, it's working actually better than we expected initially. So hopefully, people, if they're unfamiliar with it, take time to go over, maybe during off-peak time, get familiar with it so they'll feel comfortable.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Marash. Also recently, the opening of the Elias Ray Hinch's Stadium. They held their grand opening and ribbon cutting recently and was glad to be a part of that. This coming weekend, Sunday, September 10th, there will be a memorial stair climb. The Fire Marshal, I believe, is hosting that. It's 110 stories. I'll be doing a few stories. I can tell you, I wish I could do 110. I don't know that I'll have the endurance to do that. But what it really is, is in remembrance of the firefighters during 9/11 that were climbing into the towers as others were running out and kind of commemorating the 110 stories. So I don't know, Mr. Turner, do you have anything to add on that event?
It's at the Jefferson Building, starts, registration starts at 7:30, I believe.
So that'll be this coming Sunday morning?
That is correct.
If anybody wants to participate or come to that. And then that's Sunday, September 10th, that evening from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m., Operation Bugle Boy is holding a chicken dinner at the American Legion. And again, a reminder that this Saturday, Hudson is holding another lemonade stand for his efforts to help aid in hurricane victims. Does council have any announcements? I'll start with the Councilman Kemna and then Councilman.
Sure. And it's just kind of like a recap of some of the events that went on this past weekend. But Saturday morning, I had the privilege of being a part of the opening ceremony for the Missouri State Horseshoe Pitchers Association that were in town. Chris Wilson had asked me to participate with that, which was a great event. And we hosted a lot of people from all four corners of the state and they came in and had the championship. And as part of the opening ceremony, Derek Sambody, who's part of the Special Olympics, was able to throw out the first pitch. And a lot of the proceeds from that championship are going to help build the horseshoe pit at the Special Olympics Training for Life Facility. So it was a really cool event to be a part of. So I thank Chris for reaching out. And then I actually joined Chris later that afternoon. They had the Catch Me If You Can and Prison Break Run that started from prison routes from the adults. And I think the kids were there at Riverside. And they had a lot of obstacle courses and mud pits. And they had a slide, which was kind of the biggest hit of it. Actually, I think Chris Wilson and Phil Stiles safety inspected the slide to make sure that it was worked. So it was kind of a fun thing to videotape that. And actually, Councilman Hussy, I think your daughter actually would participate in that event.
She did. And Councilman Kemna also test drove the slide. I saw video evidence of that as well. If you check out his Facebook page, you'll find it there. So good form going down, Dave.
Thank you.
But it was a great event. Lots of kids getting muddy, getting dirty, and enjoying Riverside Park, so.
And then later that evening, I actually participated in the police department's ride-along program. And that was very informative. Sergeant Miles was very articulate, just sharing the day-to-day operations that the police department does at that time. I think I rode from about nine to almost two in the morning on Saturday night. And so yeah, and just him sharing a lot of the proactive measures that they're doing to just ensure safety for the community, it was really good to kind of be on the front lines a little bit to see that. And so I encourage anyone that's in this room, if time permits, to take a part of the ride-along program. I think it's a great tool to, just to kind of see firsthand, you know, what our police department's doing, so. And I think, I contacted Lieutenant Heisler, but I think Captain Clark is kind of one of the people that can get you set up to do that, so. So yeah.
Great. Thank you, Councilman Kemna. And you didn't know that throwing horseshoes and going down the mudslide would be a requirement to be on council, but good job.
Yeah, it was a great day.
And Councilman Graham has some announcements.
Yes, wanted to announce that this Saturday at 7:00 p.m., Lincoln University will be hosting their first home game for the year. They will be playing Lincoln University of Pennsylvania. So we have Lincoln versus Lincoln. As we, please come out and support as we take on Lincoln University of Pennsylvania on our new turf field. So we're very excited about this year and looking forward to getting that win on Saturday night.
Have they set up yet a ribbon cutting or an event for that yet? Maybe it's too early?
I think it's maybe doing homecoming.
Okay.
In a couple of weeks.
Okay. Sounds good. Any other announcements? Okay. And item nine, presentations from the gallery on specific bills or resolutions. We have nobody signed up this evening. Item 10, consent agenda, is there a motion to approve?
Salute.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item 11, bills introduced, 201766.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, accepting and approving the final subdivision plat of Schrader Subdivision, a subdivision of the City of Jefferson, Missouri.
Mr. Barron?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, I'll orient you to the location of this subdivision. Up on the screen is the property's highlighted in yellow. And so it's just east of the intersection of Highway 179 and Industrial Drive. There's a labeling issue there. And so it's got frontage on both Industrial Drive and West Main Street. And there's currently three buildings on the property. The desire by the property owner is to divide the property so that each of the buildings sit on its own lot. The property is owned in M2, which is a general industrial zoning district befitting its past industrial use. I believe all three buildings are currently vacant. Up on the screen is the final subdivision plat showing the property divided into three. It's classified as a minor subdivision plat because of the small number of lots and also that it does not include any new streets, as opposed to a major subdivision plat that involves streets. And so it is a small subdivision. The property, switching back to the zoning map, actually has driveway access to both Main Street and Industrial Drive. But the driveways are either shared with the neighboring property to the west or actually across the neighboring property to the east. And all three buildings rely on the same driveways. Also, a lot of the utilities for the serving of individual buildings are in place. And so staff worked with the property owner and their consultants to ensure that a reciprocal easement agreement is put in place along with the subdivision plat. So that's contained within the packets along with the plat. And that's there to ensure, you know, to make sure that all of the three lots will have proper vehicular and utility access in the future. Was recommended for approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission and introduced this evening. And so bill's pending next meeting. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Barron? Thank you. 201767.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Central Bank of Jefferson City, Missouri for banking services.
Mrs. Miller?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The city requested proposals to establish a contract for banking services. And RFP was published in the News Tribune, posted on the city website, and we also sent it to 15 firms. There were two firms that responded with offers. The evaluation committee recommended the award go to Central Bank as it is the best offer received of the two. The proposal is for a five-year period from October 1st of 2017 through September 30th of 2022. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you. 201768.
An ordinance amending ordinance number 15039, authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $15 million principal amount of sewerage system revenue bonds, State of Missouri Direct Loan Program, Series 2012 of the City of Jefferson, Missouri.
We have Mrs. Miller and Mr. Marash presenting. Or either one.
I can give a shot here, but basically what this does, it allows us to modify an existing loan agreement with the DNR from the state revolving loan fund program. But basically, this does save us money. Currently, our administrative fee is 1%. We've been working with a group, associations, Missouri Clean Water Agencies, which we're a part of, to get those fees reduced to this state. And they've reduced, they've halved them to half percent. And so over the life of the loan, the remaining life, will save almost a little over $550,000. It's a good thing.
Any questions? Thank you. 201769.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, vacating and discontinuing part of a 15-foot-wide sanitary sewer easement on Lot 98 of the Diamonds Subdivision, Section 7.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a property cleanup type ordinance, but basically, the owner came in to get a building permit and noticed a sewer easement that was not utilized on the property. So they're cleaning that up and this would vacate that sewer easement.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay. Item 12, bills pending, 201759. Oh, I'm sorry, that's the one we already did. Okay, 201760.
An ordinance amending the 2016-2017 budget of the City of Jefferson, Missouri by changing the personnel schedule within the Department of Public Works, Wastewater Division.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you, Mayor. As Clerk indicated, this would just be a title change from a crew leader to an operator. It's kind of a holdover from when this person transferred into the wastewater division. But changing the title would allow us to advertise it more particularly to describe the job that they'll actually be doing.
Any council deliberation, questions? Okay, roll call, please.
Henry?
Aye.
Hussy?
Aye.
Kemna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Bill passes. 201761.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, amending Chapter 19 Motor Vehicles and Traffic, Schedule G, stop intersections of the code of the City of Jefferson by the addition of North Circle Drive before entering West Circle Drive.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Kind of a cleanup as well. Basically, there's a T-intersection exist on North Circle to West Circle and never had a stop sign. Some residents brought it forward through the Transportation and Traffic Commission and they recommended approval of adding a stop sign on North Circle.
Any questions or deliberation? Roll call, please.
Hussy? Hussey?
Aye.
Kemna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Bill passes. 2017-62.
An ordinance amending Chapter 19 Motor Vehicles and Traffic and Chapter 22 Parking, Stopping, and Standing of the Code of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, by modification of portions to match existing conditions and plans for the Capitol Avenue Improvements Project.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you. Another cleanup. As we do our projects, oftentimes, we'll come back and then clean up the ordinances. So, any changes that were made are reflected in the ordinances. But this one was precipitated by Capitol Avenue, but does contain a few other items that we noticed that were incorrect in the code. So, make our code read with existing field conditions.
Any questions or council deliberation? Roll call, please.
Kemna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Bill passes. 2017-63.
An ordinance amending Chapter 21 nuisances of the Code of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, pertaining to abatement of nuisances.
Mr. Sanders?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My bill regards cleaning things up, too. When the new building codes were introduced and approved, there's also property maintenance code for 2015. We have some changes pertaining to that and also the tree ordinances. I'd like to go through them, not necessarily one by one, but sort of in general categories. And then, if there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer those. Under Article 1, basically, we're moving a paragraph that describes the responsibility of owners, the occupants, renters, employees of landlords. It's their duty not to allow nuisances on their property. And we also more or less define the property as the yard and also extending out to the curb, perhaps an adjacent alley and things like that. So, we're basically moving that from the section below it into that section. We're also going to include specifically that staff has the ability to make a visual inspection of a property, request from the owner or occupant of a property for an interior inspection. And it also provides for us to actually apply for the administrative search warrant. The service of notice section, right now, when we notice a property, we mail them and post the property also. Sometimes, we don't have the actual address of the property owner. Perhaps it's a junk vehicle. We like to add a section in there where we can post the property or sticker the car, but also publish in the newspaper for three consecutive weeks on the same day of public notice that there's an issue with your property and we're going to abate it unless we hear from you and go through the process. And then also, under Section A here, still under Article 1, it's going to allow us to identify an abatement bill as a personal debt. And my understanding, perhaps Margie or Ryan could expand more if there's any questions. But my understanding is that would facilitate our chances or improving our chances of collecting from the property owner, especially when there is a tax sale on that property and perhaps they don't get the lien property tax or the lien paid as part of that sales price. So, that's just helped to ensure that we will get more revenue or more of our cost back. The section on weeds, basically, there was some redundant text in there. But what was missing from that section and what was repetitive and actually in a couple of other sections was the process for the notification hearing, abatement procedures, and assessment of the costs. We do that not just for the weed article, but also for the trees and for the stored article. So, we're kind of making everything similar. So, if we have to change it one place, it covers all the different applications. The tree section, we wanted to align it with Chapter 23 regarding the Forestry Commission. And that sets out the duties of the city forester and the Department of Parks, Recreation, and Forestry. So, basically, all of those changes there are getting rid of some ambiguity of, is it public work, I mean, excuse me, is it public works, is it planning protective services, or is it the Forestry Commission's responsibility to abate tree nuisances? So, that whole section there has a lot of minor changes and also refers back to that hearing process. The last section regards storage of goods. Basically, we're adding a section so that if the property owner is violating the zoning code by having certain materials in their front yard, while it may not be a nuisance, we want to be able to enforce that as a nuisance. An example might be, we run across fences even, accessory structures, swimming pools that may be in the front of the yard. So, we're basically saying if it's a zoning code violation, we'd like to process that as a nuisance through our regular channels. And then we also define a front yard more specifically. Be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions or council deliberation? Councilwoman Ward?
What about trash cans that are left out? How exactly is that addressed? And can we tighten that up some?
My understanding is, you take your trash can out to the street. I believe it has 24 hours to stay out in the street. If we go out there and we document it with a camera and notice it is still in the same spot, we can then send them an abatement notice and give them 10 days per state statute that they have to remove the trash can. They may take it back in. They may move it a little bit. The wind may move it. If it's not in the same spot, my understanding is, you know, it's been moved and it's a whole new issue starting again the next day. I don't know if Ryan has any comments on how we might improve that process.
The way, the way the process works, we have streets lined with blue trash cans that never move except to be picked up.
We go out there and we sticker them. We notify the property owner. And with the nuisance laws the state has requiring that 10-day timeframe to abate the nuisance, I would say our hands are mostly tied. We'd like to give some creativity to the thought of how to improve that process.
And your department has to receive a complaint call, correct?
That's normally how most of our, I mean, I hate to say it.
I would be calling you every day.
Call us and we will do what we can do.
And hopefully, sometimes drawing attention to it will, will give a little urgency to the situation. And any other questions? Speaking of calling attention to things, I also wanted to note that on the city's website now, if you want to see, for example, a list of tax bills that are either outstanding or have been paid. So, they may show, for example, some previous issues. They, that is on, remind me where exactly you can find that?
It is probably under Neighborhood Services, under Property Maintenance.
Yes. So, I know that's something that if council hasn't checked that out, and for the public, too, it's definitely worth noting that those documents are available online as we strive to make everything readily available in public, especially those sorts of documents. So, appreciate that. And any other questions or deliberation on this bill? Roll call, please.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kemna?
Aye.
Motion, or bill passes. 2017-64.
An ordinance approving the redevelopment project of the St. Mary's Hospital Tax Increment Financing Plan and adopting tax increment financing therein.
Mr. Moulman?
Thank you, Mayor. This ordinance is, can be known as the activation, the TIF Activation Ordinance for the St. Mary's Hospital Tax Increment Financing Plan. Essentially, what this ordinance does, it accomplishes two things required under Chapter 99 of the TIF Act. It approves the TIF redevelopment project within the TIF redevelopment area and then approves or activates the implementation of tax increment financing within the area, within the area. When this bill was introduced at August 21st meeting, I told the council that generally, the process that would happen with this is that it gets introduced within 90 days of the TIF Commission hearing on it and then would sit until the project is ready to get underway. So, that way, the activation of TIF, of TIF collection, capture of the eats and the pilots coincides with generally the opening of the development project. So, that way, the project can take full advantage of the 23 years of TIF financing. As included in your packet, there was a letter from the attorney from FNF Development indicating that it would, the developers' preference that the city council go ahead and activate the TIF at this meeting and go ahead and get started, the TIF financing. I think they are, if I could speak for them, confident in their timing and their project timeframes and would like to just, they see this as a, as kind of a button that needs to get buttoned up. And they want to take care of that sooner than later. And so, that request was included in your packet. And so, that's why this is actually in front of you tonight. And so, it is ready for approval. It is a necessary part of the TIF statute in order to fully implement the TIF plan. And is, it's ready to go and is part of the process.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Moulman or council deliberation? Roll call, please.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kemna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Item 15, presentations from the gallery on other topics. We have no one signed up this evening. Item 16, council and staff discussion of presentation topics. Any council discussion? Item 17, any new business? Item 18, any unfinished business? Item 19, go into closed session pursuant to Section 610.021 of the Revised Statutes of Missouri. The chair will entertain a motion to go into closed session to discuss the following, legal action, Section 610.021.1. Is there a motion?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kemna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Motion passes. So, we will have closed session here now, in two minutes, right?
Two minutes?
Turn the sound system off.